City of Lawrence Common Council, special meeting is now called to order. It is September 30th, 2019, and at 6 o'clock PM. We have a quorum. This is a rezoning hearing. Property at 8,005 Oaklandon Road. We have a rezoning of 6.85 acres from the D2 district to the C-S district to provide for a bed and breakfast in the existing dwelling structure and event center in a proposed 2,400-square-foot barn. So, all who intends to testify or believe that they may testify should stand and be sworn by the clerk.
Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Be seated.
Thank you. Petitioner has 15 minutes to present case.
Good evening, Madam President, members of the council. For the record, my name is Russell Brown, an attorney with the law firm of Clark Quinn Moses Scott &amp; Grand, 320 North Meridian Street, Suite 1100 in Indianapolis. I represent the petitioner in this matter, who is unexpectedly delayed, so I apologize for him not being here on time this evening. I hope he'll arrive during my presentation. Dr. Mark Durden is the property owner and the petitioner in this matter. This is a property with a common street address of 8,005 as well as 8,045 Oaklandon Road. The property is two parcels comprising approximately 6.85 acres in size. Slightly less than three acres of that is located in the floodplain or floodway. So you have a little bit less than four acres of usable property here. Dr. Durden has lived in this property for approximately a decade, and regardless of the outcome of tonight's petition, he will continue to call this property his home. As Dr. Durden has been active in various community and medical organizations over the years, he's become more aware of the lack of medium-sized event spaces in the city of Lawrence and nearby. That caused him to begin with the thought of an idea of utilizing his property to operate a facility that would fill that void. Further discussions with people like me included the idea of potentially including the utilization of the existing home for a bed and breakfast, which would be available to utilizers of the event space, but also guests not affiliated with that event space. The result of those discussions and ideas is the zoning petition that's before you tonight. The request tonight is, as read into the record, a rezoning from the D2 classification to a CS. That CS would have two permitted uses: the use of a bed and breakfast, which would be permitted with a special exception under existing D2 zoning, and the event space. As you likely know, a CS zoning requires the submission of a plan of operation, which I've provided to you tonight for your reference. The petitioner's plans here would be to operate this 2,400-square-foot facility for a variety of wedding events, weddings, corporate events, and family events, like a quinceañera or a family reunion. The events would likely, but not exclusively, be weekend events. The events will all occur indoors, and according to the Lawrence Fire Department, the maximum occupancy for an event space of this size would be 160 people. The construction of the event center would also have the proposed parking lot, which, as designed, would have 76 spaces. The staff report indicates that this number would permit an event center of a much greater size. 304 is the number that's given in the staff report. But as you know, any request for a CS modification requires a public hearing. So the maximum size of this event barn could be, under this petition, is that 2,400 square feet, regardless of the parking spaces permitted and what square footage that parking might support. So while we understand that the staff report may indicate that this parking lot is overparked, we believe the parking provides the opportunity for this space to be utilized by the number of occupants permitted by fire code. The plan of operation provides any live music on-site, which would end by 11 o'clock PM. This was chosen to conform with the hours of operation for live music, which occurs directly across Oaklandon, at the restaurant currently operating as Murphy's Craft House. And again, all of the music would be provided indoors. So we believe that our proposed request is of no greater intensity than the uses which already occur on the commercial property immediately adjacent to this proposed use. As you can see in the staff report, or if you drove to the property, this site is a very beautiful location for this proposed use. The site plan before you tonight seeks to maximize maintaining that beauty, even with the new construction provided here. I'll provide you some of the ways the petitioner believes that the site design has attempted to maximize and maintain that existing location and the existing beauty of that. Again, as you know, the site plan is part of our petition, so any modifications would require either a public hearing or would require the approval of the administrator from the Department of Metropolitan Development. So we are somewhat bound by the site plan as provided tonight. First, the building is being pulled up close to the existing right-of-way, which there's also discussion about proposed right-of-way, I'll come back to at the end of my presentation. But pulling it next to the existing right-of-way does, we believe, is shield the parking from that existing right-of-way. And that's, as you may know, that's a proposed or current development trend. We're doing it here on the fort, doing it in other places where you put parking behind the main building, but try to pull the main building up to the proposed right-of-way. We believe here this shields that parking, but it also allows the new building, which will likely have a nod, at least, towards Latin architecture, to shield some of that view of parking from the right-of-way. It will also allow those other undisturbed areas to be the focus of the entry off of Oaklandon Road for this proposed location. Second, the proposal does not contemplate adding an additional curb cut on Oaklandon, as all traffic for the event barn would use the existing Northern Drive. There are two drives on this property. There's a Northern and a Southern Drive. The Southern Drive only accesses the home, and that was how it would continue to be operated, so there wouldn't be access to the event barn from the Southern, which is south of the existing creek. There was a comment in the staff report about the impact of traffic exiting the property onto Oaklandon Road. As a reminder, we believe 76 cars as a maximum parking space is relatively small impact on existing traffic. Not all of that would be exiting the property at the same time. If you've gone to weddings or family events, some people leave earlier than others, so you wouldn't have 76 cars exiting the property or entering the property at the same time. The petitioner's plan here is that for each event, there would be security on-site, and part of that security's duties would be to aid those leaving the property. Much is like's done on those large church properties to the north, where at high event times, you do have law enforcement or armed, uniformed security assisting in people exiting the property. Couple that with the concession that a relatively small trip generation in comparison to the commercial use across the street, and the fact that the traffic will not be at peak traffic times, so these are likely going to be evening events, so you won't have during school pickup or drop-off for those various schools nearby or at weekday commuting times. We believe that this proposed traffic would have a minimal impact on surrounding uses. You'll notice that the site plan also contemplates the continuation of sidewalk along a long portion of the western boundary of the property, matching up with sidewalks located on Holy Cross's property to the north. As the staff report mentions, this amount is well in excess of what's required by the current zoning for this new construction. We believe this will assist the city of Lawrence in continuing to create a walkable and bikeable community, and begins the path of establishing walkability from those residential uses to the south to the property with those commercial and religious uses which dominate the Fox and Oaklandon intersection. Fourth, as it relates to tree preservation or replacement, the staff report mentions that the proposal may impact a number of heritage trees on-site. It's our belief that there would be no more than four heritage trees located within the development path and two within the requested right-of-way. So of those four within the path, one is likely to be determined dead or dying based on its current condition, which, under the ordinance, does allow you to take that down without replacement. The petitioner here understands the obligation of the preservation ordinance as well as those replacement obligations if they do have to come down during that development plan. So those obligations are handled at site plan approval or permitting process where they would be developed and approved in this process. Finally, I'll talk just a moment about the right-of-way dedication request contained in the staff report. As you all undoubtedly know, it's not unusual for right-of-way dedication to be coupled with a rezoning request. That's in lieu of the landowner being compensated for their property through the eminent domain process, as other landowners who might be giving up property would be. One of the issues with dedicating right-of-way as a condition of this petition is that right-of-way, when it was ever constructed, would demolish the existing stone gate and wrought iron which exist on the property. So while the petitioner would be willing to grant the request for additional right-of-way as a condition of approval, the petitioner would request a compensation arrangement be made to allow those improvements to be relocated when widening does in fact happen. To our understanding, that is a planned improvement, but it is not a priority improvement under the current thoroughfare plan. I'll talk very briefly about compatibility of use, and then I'm happy to answer questions that the council has. The comp plan for the intersection of Oaklandon and Fox contemplates commercial uses to the west of Oaklandon Road. It also contemplates commercial uses on the parcels to the north of the subject property, but commences with residential uses on this property moving south. As someone who was a member of the stakeholder group which reviewed the draft comp plan last year prior to approval by the MDC, I can tell you that maybe a more transitional use would have been appropriate on this parcel. Here's why. I think that you have here a transitional use, a proposed transitional use. To the north, you have activities which occur mostly on a six- or seven-day-a-week basis. You have two schools, Holy Cross and St. Simon, that both operate elementary schools. There's obviously all sorts of activities that occur with their parishioners or their members. That's great. That's what they're there for, that's the intent of those religious uses. But they operate in a fashion which is much more commercial than this site will use, where you'll have, once or twice a week, you'll have an event which would operate, and then you would have the bed and breakfast uses, which is very minimal with only three beds. So we believe that this is an appropriate transitional use from those religious uses to the north and as well as from the commercial uses to the west. The site plan does contemplate the all-event hall activity to remain north of the floodplain and floodway. So you would be able to utilize the floodplain and floodway for that buffer to any uses going south. That's a natural barrier, and it's also a very real barrier. Also, with the bed and breakfast being located on the east boundary of the property, we believe that kind of provides a buffer to any uses to the east, which Holy Cross is the adjacent landowner on the east boundary as well. So admittedly, this parcel does have a comp plan, a designation for residential uses. But I believe that based on the site plan and the plan of operation proposed tonight, this use is a good transitional use from those existing, and to their credit, and for the good of Lawrence and for good of our community, expanding religious uses to the north, I believe this provides a good buffer there. For each of these reasons, we provided tonight, we believe the proposal will bring a very reasonable and respectable use to the city of Lawrence. It will provide an asset for many in our community who want to host their family or corporate events here, but can't find a space which is to their liking or appropriately sized for their needs. Given that Dr. Durden will reside in that the bed and breakfast is required by the zoning ordinance to operate a bed and breakfast, and that the uses are linked, the bed and breakfast and the event hall are linked by that CS zoning petition, we believe that this use is appropriate in size and intensity of operation and desirable for the future uses which surround this property. We did have a pre-filing meeting with the city of Lawrence administration prior to filing this. At this time, I'm not aware of any objections that the administration has to our proposed request this evening. Would incorporate our materials into the record and ask for your favorable recommendation on this matter to the Metropolitan Development Commission, and with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Any counselors?
Madam President? Yes, I have several questions. You did mention that the events would all be inside, and I know that you said music would stop at 11:00 PM, so even the music would be only inside?
Correct.
Okay. And then I was also wondering if you had heard from any of, from the churches to the north or residents to the south, and if anyone had any concerns or any opposition?
The only communication I've had is with someone from Holy Cross that I initiated. I know, I believe someone may be here tonight from that. I reached out to them when we filed the petition to alert them that we were doing that, and they asked for a copy of the staff report today, which I provided. So other than that, I've not heard from anyone.
I think the only other question I had, I thought that I saw somewhere, and it may have been in the staff report, that if this is approved, there will be, will there be three, I don't know if they'd be rooms, at the bed and breakfast that will actually be for rent?
Correct.
Is that correct?
Yes. There'll be three, yeah, three available suites at the bed and breakfast, correct.
And for rent, I mean, like, long-term rent, not?
No.
Oh, for the bed and breakfast?
They're bed and breakfasts uses only.
Okay. Okay, so only three?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Any other counselors?
Madam President, I have a couple. Will there be liquor served there?
Any food and beverage service would be done through a caterer, so that would potentially be something that a caterer could provide, but that would be under the caterer's agreement. Would not be a liquor license likely held by the owner.
And I also would like to see the appearance of the brick and wrought iron stay. They could move it back, or if we needed it for extra space. I like that.
That would be the petitioner's desire as well. Obviously, it's somewhat iconic. I mean, I've lived in Lawrence for 16 years now, and that's how, when the client called, that's how I knew what he was talking about, is the one that has the brick and wrought iron right there. So I think it is somewhat iconic, and that would be his desire about trying to maintain it or relocate it if right-of-way was ever utilized.
Counselor Shavat?
Counselor, I'm just curious, in preparation for this, has the petitioner gone out and looked to see what other comparable areas in Lawrence that have something like this? I think the closest one I know is the vineyard that's outside of the city of Lawrence that's quite popular.
Yeah, and that actually was probably one of the things that we talked about, was what's comparable in the area? There doesn't seem to be a lot. You have the garrison, which is, you know, potentially similar, but is a lot larger and therefore generally more expensive. And you have food minimums and those types of things. So this would be different in that you wouldn't have, you know, that obligation. I think actually, one of the most comparable is probably Lawrence Community Park on Franklin Road, in that as far as size goes, that's a very comparable in size. Obviously, a much different setting, you likely wouldn't host many weddings in that facility. But I think as far as size goes, that's probably what there is. You have a big void, 10, 15 people in a meeting, you have a variety of options, you have buildings on the fort, you have the trustees office that I did, and some of those things. And at bigger, you have the garrison, which has a bigger space, but that kind of 100 to 150 attendee, you don't have a lot of options.
Was perhaps some of the, because you've mentioned the neighboring schools and all the activities that they have throughout the year, was some of the thinking that it would be a destination place for maybe the parents, that if they wanted, because there's no place to really stay up in there overnight, so this would be somewhat of an attractive place for parents to come and spend the night and be close to their kids at school for the programs? Was that?
I think part of the idea was, an idea of, wouldn't it be neat to have the opportunity to have the bridal party or a member of the bridal party get ready?
Right across the street.
Stay there, or maybe that's where the initial night stay is, or folks who are attending. And then you would make it available to members of the public, but I think those would obviously be clear marketing opportunities to market to the schools. You know, three rooms isn't a lot, so you're not going to have?
Sure.
A big mass of folks who do there, but I think there'd be opportunities for those folks as well. And again, people who may be visiting the area, and you don't want to come to a hotel. I don't know what other bed and breakfasts exist in the Geist area, but obviously, this would be very close to a lot of folks who live in the Geist area.
And my last question, this was kind of news to me, and maybe you may or may not know the history of this, but this heritage tree conservation, is this a state statute that's in?
That's a local Indianapolis ordinance, Larry can correct me on the history of that, but there is an obligation as it relates to heritage trees, trees over, I believe, 18 inches in caliper of certain species. There's an obligation to either preserve them, or if you have, they can be taken down in certain circumstances, which is included in your staff report, some of those. And if they're taken down or authorized to be taken down, then there's a replacement, and it's a pretty hefty replacement. It's not one-to-one. That's a pretty hefty replacement of like-kind on the property with the goal of, you know, trying to preserve those at all costs.
So just as a landowner, if I own this property and I have one of these trees, I'm prohibited from cutting down my own tree because of Indianapolis's, I mean, regardless if there's development or not, I'm just curious?
I think it's, Larry can speak to that. Generally, I believe it's based on development, so it's based on a development plan taking, you know, proposing to take it down. But again, one of these has had a large limb that fell off over the last year, so it's probably dead or dying, which would be one of the permitted reasons to take it down regardless.
I just had never heard of that, so thank you.
Can you tell me, what is the maximum occupancy of those three rooms?
I believe they're all just two occupant rooms, so I don't think there's anything that...
Okay.
Madam Clerk, would you swear in, Dr. Durden? He is.
Did you sign the sheet in the back?
What was that, ma'am?
You sure you signed the sheet in the back before?
He's a petitioner.
Okay. Is your right hand, repeat after me? Do you, I mean, not repeat after me. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Yes.
Answer it.
So to answer that question, there are two smaller rooms. There will be a queen-size bed in each of those. And then there's a king-size bed in the other room. And it actually is a rather large bedroom, so it'll be almost like a Embassy Suites kind of a size, if you think of it.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions for the petitioner?
Madam President, gentlemen, I'm not very good at math, so I'm trying to do this as I can. 2,400 square feet for the event space.
Correct.
76 parking spaces.
Correct.
For 304. So your maximum occupancy of the event space is 304?
Now, that could be under the parking ordinance, but we're not, we're going under what the size of the building and what Lawrence Fire has told us. Lawrence Fire has told us 160 is the max occupancy.
160, okay.
So the parking ratio under the zoning ordinance is calculated different than what Lawrence Fire?
And do you plan to have 76 spaces?
Yes.
You're looking at one space per two.
Yeah.
I'm worried that it's going to spill across the street into Murphy's and then take some of their business away from them. So that's why I'm trying to do some quick math here.
So it's anticipated that because the occupancy is going to be maximum of 160, if people, two people come in a car, you're looking at 80 at the max, and I don't anticipate any spillover. In fact, my goal is to actually keep it under around 100, because again, I'm looking for that intimate setting for a family type of activity.
Sure, and I read it wrong, because I thought we were looking at 304 seats, which...
Yeah, 304 would definitely create some concerns.
Okay. That's all I have. Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other counselors? Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have the remonstrator. 15 minutes to present your case. Opposition or objections? So do we have anyone here to object? Seeing none. Next, we have staff comments on behalf of Department of Metropolitan Development.
Larry Callaway from Department of Metropolitan Development, city of Indianapolis. We are recommending denial of this request. Basically, in looking at this, staff first, of course, looked at the comprehensive plan recommendation, which for the site recommends rural and estate neighborhood, which, of course, would be something based on the type of development you see on the, on this site and south of the site, where you have large lot development, single-family homes. And so we felt going to a, what is a C4 youth, which is what the commercial center across Oaklandon Road is owned, the strip center that contains a, I believe it contains a grocery, well, still contains a grocery store of some size, as well as other uses, is the zone where this type of development should be, not in a large lot estate type of development. We think this is an inappropriate location for this type, for that type of facility. The bed and breakfast, we feel differently. We feel that that's reasonable. Bed and breakfast is a permitted use by special exception in residential district, and they are, what they're proposing is pretty much in line with what you would be required to do for bed and breakfast special exception, and they're actually less intense than what the maximum bed and breakfast that would be permitted to have, which could be up to six bedrooms for guests, and they're only proposing three. So clearly, we don't have any issue with the bed and breakfast facility. But with respect to the event center, we feel that, you know, with the size of the event center, although by some standards, relatively small event center, but with the, when it's on this type of lot with 76 parking spaces, that would change the character of a significant portion of the lot by removing several trees and just detracting from the general nature of the development on the east side of Oaklandon Road. We feel it's an inappropriate intrusion to that side of, to the east side of Oaklandon Road. The general issues that are of concern with respect to these type of operations are late hours of operation, and even with those late hours of, even when hours of operation are nominally fairly early, then there's concern about the sort of after-hours lingering that occurs at many event centers. And then, and then also the, what the long-term implications of permitting an event center would be at this particular site. Now, the, and many times, what happens is that it's down the road when the event center transfers hands and someone else has a different vision of how to use that facility is where the problems occur, which has been something that has happened in many different settings, whether they be event centers that have been placed in industrial districts or residential districts or commercial districts. And so that's always of some concern. And then just general noise, traffic, like I said, loitering after events, overflow parking, if those capacity requirements are not adhered to, can be very impactful to neighbors. So for all those reasons, we don't support the event center or request at this location. Do support the bed and breakfast portion of the request, and with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Any counselors? Counselor Shavat?
Larry, you used the phrase, "it's an intrusion." Who's it an intrusion on? If it's a secluded property?
It's what?
You used the phrase that this is an intrusion. Who's this intruding on if it's in a secluded property that's surrounded by trees and gates?
Well, it's an intrusion into the east side of Oaklandon Road and that you're bringing a C4-type use, which is all commercial uses are on the west side of Oaklandon. the west side of Oaklanden. Now you're bringing a commercial use onto the east side of Oaklanden, which is contrary to what you, what you find on that side. You have institutional uses and then you have single, large lot, single-family uses. So in that way, we feel that's intrusion into the character of sort of that area.
If I'm not mistaken, I, I live right there and that shopping center butts up basically to the backwoods of my property. And I, I forget what the bar slash restaurant is, is it Murphy's or?
Murphy's.
Murphy's. I believe they're open every night till 11:00 PM because I can hear the music every night. So I mean, it's kind of, you said it needs to be in, in correlation with the surrounding areas. Well, I mean, there's already something there, it's just they don't have the capacity this would have. So I mean, we hear the music every night. We actually kind of enjoy it, it's kind of like the Vineyard in McCordville. It's kind of nice to hear the music.
Vineyard, couldn't remember the name of it.
Sorry.
Daniels.
Yeah, Daniel, so there's already something kind of similar like that there. Thank you.
Any other councilors? Petitioner has five minutes for rebuttal and for closing statement.
Thank you. I'll be very brief. We, we think, for the reasons I mentioned in my case in chief, I think we believe this is an appropriate location and appropriate use here, given the relatively small size of it. I can tell you, I do work around the state of Indiana. Event barns, event locations of small scale like this are located in all sorts of communities throughout the state. It is a use that, that people who want to have an intimate type of setting, my brother got married in one in Brown County, where was about 24, probably a little bit smaller than 2,400 square feet, but very similar size, had a bed and breakfast on site, very similar use, very similar, so we don't have that. We don't have anything like that here. You have a petitioner here who owns a property, is going to reside on a property, operate a bed and breakfast, which by definition requires the owner to, to live in the space, to be there. This, all of the commercial use here will be located within, Counselor Hall, I'm doing math now, so approximately 100 feet of, of the northern property line. This, this property line, this property has, when you combine the two parcels, has about 460 feet of frontage along Oaklanden Road. So you have property, everything would be located on that northern 100 feet. It would all be located further north than Murphy's is. So if you take, you know, just a correspondence there, the Murphy's operation probably doesn't have 160, but close when you add in outdoor seating, which I was on the Board of Zoning Appeals when we approved outdoor seating for Fox, I think, which was five uses ago maybe. But it's, it's been outdoor seating, I think it's relatively well-received, it's always busy in the summertime. It's an attractive use and people, people want to be there. We think this, again, we tried to model this in a way that was not intrusive, was in line with what's around us, around, around what's proposed or what exists. This is, those are institutional uses to the north, but the comp plan does provide for them to be commercial. So they do operate in a very useful way, they operate a lot. There's a lot of operation that goes on at Holy Cross, there's a lot of operation that goes on at St. Simon. My favorite event ever June is, is held at St. Simon. And it's, it's a county fair that occurs on a, on a church property. So we believe this is, this is in keeping with what goes on. Quite frankly, we believe that the fact that there's not folks, a significant number of folks from residential properties here, there's a lot of residential properties who receive notice of this proposal and we don't have folks here requesting denial. So for all of those reasons, we would ask for your favorable vote tonight. We would make it subject to the plan of operation and site plan that are provided and ask for your favorable recommendation to the Metropolitan Development Commission.
Thank you. So I'm going to allow councilors any further comment and I'd, I'd like to start. I live in District 6, so I go by that every single day and I'm very familiar with St. Simon and Holy Cross and the traffic and that. As a homeowner that lives in that area, I think this is, would be a great asset to our community. We don't have anything like this. I think it's nice, even for myself, to have family come in to sort of have an option. We have to go really far to get to any good options, you know, from, from that location. I would say that I, I would like for the petitioner, you know, to abide by what you've committed to in terms of the traffic, because that, that would probably be my only concern, is that it's really tight right there. And just to make sure that there is security of some sort directing traffic out. I understand that at a wedding, people leave at different times, but if you get more than about 10 or 15 cars coming out of there, that's a lot. So, you know, if you have someone that's controlling the traffic at events and that's a requirement, I think that's, that's key.
Counselor, can I respond to your comment?
Please.
That is not, that's always been in the plan, it's never been written in the plan of operation. We would, we would commit to add that there would be uniformed security there to direct traffic
Thank you.
For any event, that would be an addition to the plan of operation.
Thank you. I appreciate that. I think if, if our constituents would have any complaints, it might be that, it's just traffic and congestion, so I appreciate that. Any other councilors? Okay. Seeing none, we have, didn't have any remonstrators, but I'm going to open it up one more time. Remonstrators, you have five minutes for rebuttal and for closing statements. Seeing none. We all have ballot here if you just asked your vote.
Who's this, this one?
I may not have signed it. I may not have, I don't know. Signed mine.
No, I signed mine.
It's me.
Six votes for cast, six to grant.
Thank you very much. Thank you for your attention.
We adjourn.